Into three or four, the other parts of the garage, barn, and older part of the house, into three or four separate condominium type units.
You're not zoning for it?
We're not zoning for it.
Correct.
At the senior overlay district.
You're at the senior overlay district, only you did the bike path. You're on the other side of the bike path.
It's those existing structures where it will locate.
Pardon?
It's existing structures wherever located.
Oh, it is?
We wrote that in because of town, North Hadley Hall.
Okay, okay.
So it's on town water and sewer. And we would maintain the existing town water and sewer connection into the commons, to the common space, so there'd be a homeowners association that would, you know.
These would be rental units?
No, they would be condominium type units.
Okay.
So they'd be, the individual units would be bought and sold. Each owner would be a partial owner of the common space. So, but I, when I read the zoning, the bylaws for the senior overlay district, the only thing that looked like we might not match is that it has a minimum number of units, S eight, and we're talking about three or four. You can see on the last page, there's a, we might maintain the garage as it is right now as a garage and make the barn, the barn would be converted into two units and have a unit in the older part of the house. So it would be three or four units. And each of those units would then have a separate connection to water and sewer.
Okay.
And, you know, electricity.
These will all be market rate units?
Market rate units, but for fifty-five and older.
Right, okay.
So there's going to be no expansion of the existing house?
Correct. It's, we would use the same footprint and try to maintain the same look. Especially the barn, I mean, the front part of the house wouldn't change at all on the outside, but what faces the road, you know, but the barn would change a little bit because there would be windows and doors in it, but we try to maintain that same look as a barn.
I mean, as Bill says, it is, it is an existing structure and the bylaw does allow existing, existing structures to be converted. So, um, on the surface, it looks doable.
Okay.
So you have to go through the whole permit process to do this.
Right. Well, so, and that's what I wanted to come first to ask about because to get that whole, even the preliminary site plan, the designer wants about five thousand dollars as a retainer.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to go down the drain.
Yeah. Now, before you go and investing in any of that, I would recommend talking to your neighbors.
I've started that already.
Okay, and see what their opinions are. Because if they violently object, then you have a problem.
Right.
What if they're more or less, mm, or, or even in favor of it? But as long as they're not very much against it, then you have a decent chance.
You have a decent chance.
You probably have better than decent chance that they don't oppose it, put it that way.
Okay. I did have a question about it. I, you can't see it in the picture, but the driveway goes beside the house. Oh, maybe you can see it here. Yeah. The driveway goes, the front of the house is right here. It goes, and then the driveway goes by it. The garage right now is right in here, and the barn's back here. We were wondering about the possibility of extending the driveway down this little hill and around the back and putting the garage units underneath the barn in the, in the lower level.
That's, that's entirely up to you.
So there wouldn't be any problem about?
We, we don't have a big problem of no garage, garage, how you, how you situate it.
Or, or putting, adding driveway or anything like that?
No, no.
Conservation Commission may have a concern.
Yeah, because you're writing it to the river, you've got to be careful with the Conservation Commission. I don't know if you fall into the, into the...
We're not within two hundred feet. I don't know what, and we're not in the flood plain because the house sits up high.
Yeah, okay. Um, I would just put a quick one by Janice Stone because she's pretty much downstairs and ask her her two cents on that. And just so you, you've covered at least that part of the base, are you subject to Conservation Commission stuff or not?
And what about historical? Is, do we have to?
No.
We don't, we're not...
Historical, historical has taken the stand that they used to look, review everything that was in the village overlay district and stuff. And last year, we got a note from them that they don't have the membership or the time to be devoting to this kind of stuff anymore.
Mm-hmm.
So they says, you know, you, you follow the, the rules and the regulations of the, whatever it might be, and just keep us informed.
Okay.
And especially if you're not making any significant, if you're not making any significant change to the exterior, whatever it looks like today is more or less going to look like when it's done.
Well, I mean, the barn will not look like that, but it'll be the same size.
Right, but I, I understand that. But I mean, in general, you're not going to make, it's not going to be, go from a, from a house-looking unit today to something more, very extremely modern.
Right.
Okay.
So this would be fifty-five and older housing?
Fifty-five and older.
So where did you, I'm just looking to that section that you had mentioned, about eight.
I marked up my...
Okay, yeah, I see it here.
Here it is, twenty-seven point five point five point four.
Yep.
Yeah.
So now we have to go to check singles, housing development and definitions.
The definitions are on the back page.
So, just something I saw about how the conversion of existing unit was in a different section.
Well, I, I looked for that. There actually is a section marked conversion of existing units, but it, there was nothing underneath. And when I clicked on that, it didn't, here it is. This conversion of existing units is right here at twenty-seven point four.
Right, right. And that is actually back here in the table of uses as a footnote.
Oh.
So that is on page ten of my version.
But that's not just, that's the whole by, those are the whole bylaws.
Yeah, this is the table of uses and it has a footnote for conversion of existing structures to senior housing.
Mm-hmm.
And that actually calls for a special permit under a different section, under section six and not under section twenty-seven, which might make it easier.
Right, because this is written, it seems like this is written for more like something that's happening on East Street.
Right.
Right, a much bigger development.
Senior housing development talks about a master planned development of land as a unified self-contained residential community.
Yeah.
And that's what requires eight because when you're getting up to that scale, I think we wanted to be sure you had some economy of scale that, but the conversion of an existing unit is in this earlier section, which is a, a note to article or section three, which is the table of uses.
Mm-hmm.
Use regulations. And we just haven't had this come up yet. In fact, for all the time we've had this, we've only had that one project actually get anywhere close to. We adopted this in two thousand eight, eleven years later, we finally have our first project underway.
Right, well, and it's, this, this particular piece of property is really such a nice piece of property because it is on the river with that view and the walking distance of the bike path, the senior center, the library, bus route.
Jim, are you looking for something a little, that will not cost the, the exorbitant down payment that she's concerned about, something like halfway, a little bit more sketch, so, and give us time to kind of review?
Oh, the conceptual plan? I was looking at that list of things that has to be on there.
Yeah, so, but go instead to the, you'll have to go online.
Yeah.
And this is the PDF that is above the, when you go into the code.
Yes.
There's a PDF that's separate from it. If you click on section three, it'll say, see, see the chart. The chart is not in section three, it's just on, on the opening page.
Okay. And it's the, it's the code?
Yeah, article three is the table of uses.
Okay.
Which looks like this.
Okay.
And at the end, there are notes. And note seven deals with conversion of existing structures to senior housing. And that refers you to section six of the zoning bylaw, which is the general special permit and not to, um, the section on senior housing.
Okay.
So I think that will...
And that outlines what I need to present.
That outlines what you need.
Okay. And most likely, it's not as extensive as the list.
Not as extensive because we're not looking for the drainage plans for the new road you're putting in.
Right.
And the other thing is it also specifically talks about existing buildings. And although it doesn't, it doesn't address the total of eight units, more than likely, an existing building in all districts, with the exception of very few, can't possibly support eight units.
Right.
Because it says, specifically, it says, uh, shall not be substantially altered and shall maintain the aesthetic and character of the older buildings in Hadley. So therefore, if when you think about what it's saying and what it means, most of the time, unless you're creating a, a unit that is ten by twelve, you know, you're not going to have, even your, even your units are not huge, twenty by, what are they, twenty by thirty?
Yeah, well, exactly. We're, one, one idea is to do it so that they're a little bit bigger with only three units.
Okay. All, all I'm saying is I don't think that, that's going to be a showstopper for you, the eight units.
Okay. And you don't anticipate any other showstoppers?
Conservation Commission would be the big one. We have no...
The only one.
No input on that.
And you, and she's there now or she, just her office is downstairs?
Sometimes she's there at night, but she's usually there at times during the day.
Yeah.
Okay.
Her office is at the end of this hall.
Okay, all right. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Greg Durso?
I've lived in Hadley for over eighteen years and I've been a business owner in Hadley as well. I own Pastor Patty's Gifts and Goodies. So there's a gift shop and, and sandwich shop with all different things that we sold. Just recently, we launched a website called Barn Out Back, which is an online gift store that specializes in gifts and, and vintage pieces that I find. And we had the idea of possibly putting a showcase just on the weekends in our barn that's located out back of my house.
Where do you live?
I live on Thirty Lawrence Plain Road. So that's located right next to my cousin's, Sabasco's lumber.
Okay.
So it's right next, right next door.
Okay.
And my brother-in-law's sister live next door to me, so I'm kind of sandwiched in between both of them.
Okay.
So what I did was I took the layout of the property and you can see how I've marked out what I would do for parking. It would allow people to like, I, it's only going to be on the weekends, so it'd be like Saturday and Sunday. And we would have just that one room in our barn that we would showcase and put all of the gifts in. So it's only one room.
What is that?
That's just the full, I just wanted to bring the full one so you could see the whole property.
Okay, that, that would be better to talk about. Now...
This is the barn that I'm talking about.
That one right there?
Yep.
Okay.
And then...
Just hold it open.
Yep.
So the barn is about how big?
Um, it says fifteen feet by...
Looks like maybe thirty?
Yeah.
Fifteen by thirty.
And so the one, there's two rooms in the front. The first room would be the one that we would use and it runs the whole length of the barn.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be the one that I would use for all of the gifts. There are no steps that lead up to it.
Okay. Okay, now, you wonder, you, your parking is going to be basically over here?
Yeah, and we own this.
Just on the grass?
On the grass, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. This is all paved and also this, this is a driveway with paving. We just felt like it would be better for low to have the, the actual parking over here because people could back out and then go out.
Okay.
So it just made more sense. I've talked to a couple of people that do like parking as, as a sideline.
This is, this is B and M right here?
Um...
Or Teddy Machowski?
Yeah, and my, yeah, I think so, yeah. Because, so this is a business?
Yeah, yeah, this is, yeah, this is, yeah, this is Teddy, this is, this is the old B and M.
Yeah.
Back here.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is my brother and sister.
Yeah, Helen Malato's old house.
Yeah.
And you lived there, okay. And that's Charlie.
Yeah.
Okay.
Obviously, this is older, but the same thing.
Local business. Yeah, local business zoning.
Okay, you're in, you are located in the business zone.
Yeah.
This, this barn is your back three hundred feet.
Yeah.
Okay. You're under a thousand square feet. You're not making any changes to the structure and drainage or anything else. What are you going to have for a sign?
Um, I would say, I would probably go with Tim Nyhar with that size of it because I know that when we were a business owner before, we would have that. I'm probably going to place it right here on the edge of my property.
Your sign needs to comply with zoning.
Yeah.
Forty square feet.
Yeah.
Maximum.
Yeah.
Step back accordingly by the zoning bylaw in section seven?
I think it's seven, but it's in there, Tippin.
Yeah.
Um, you don't need anything from us, but we'd like to see the sign before you put it up.
Okay.
Just a picture of the sign.
Okay.
Are you thinking of a permanent sign or something you'll just put out on days that you are open?
Um, because the, because of the website being open twenty-four hours, I would love to have the sign there permanently because then it would, it would say the hours of operation. So as people are driving by, they're like, it's a Tuesday, they won't pull in and like waste their time.
Okay.
So that's probably the reason why that I would definitely want a permanent sign there.
Yep. And that's, that you're allowed to have that.
Okay.
Externally illuminated, if you will even illuminate, if you illuminate it at all.
Okay.
Um, that's it.
Okay.
The rest is between you and a building inspector.
Okay.
Since you're below all the thresholds, we don't even need to...
Right.
Vote to approve.
Okay.
Yeah, but we will need to vote to approve the sign when you have a design.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Yep. Pooja.
P, oh, that P?
Yes.
Pooja, okay.
Sorry, my handwriting is not very good. So I'm actually a dentist and my wife is one too. And we currently work in Amherst. At First Aid Dental and we both are associates, so we are trying to open up our own dental office.
Okay.
And we looked into this space, which is Mill Valley Commons. It's right on Route nine.
Yep.
And one of the space was available, so we discussed into signing a lease and it's basically empty, so it's twenty-six hundred square feet, which serves our purpose for now. The only thing which I was told basically is to bring like the signage, which goes outside. So I think the only thing that I was told aloud by the owner is that this Pioneer Valley is the place that we are replacing.
Okay.
I just came up with the prototype that this is where the sign would look like.
Okay.
And I did get a printout of the actual signage is...
Oh, yeah, I didn't think I'd have that. That's way more than anybody else does.
Yeah, and it's supposed to be seventy-one inches wide and fifteen inches tall.
Okay.
So that, that's the only sign that goes there. The only other thing that we use for not signage, but the glass windows are there, so like a film, something that's of course not illuminated, but something from the outside, so for privacy. But also it says like dental care.
Okay.
But on the building, I don't believe that the owner has given us permission to put any signs anywhere else except this assigned slot.
Okay, and how big is the sign? Fifteen by seventy-one?
Fifteen by seventy-one.
Inches, obviously. Okay. That's like, uh...
Actually, I'd calculated forty centimeter by one eighty. And instead of saying inches, the person printed out in centimeters and it was this humongous big sign, so we had to reprint it. I was like, oh, that's not going to fly. I, I'm not sure if I need to present any building outlines or anything.
No, because we, we're, the building and everything else is already been approved.
Yes.
You're not making any change to the building. You're doing, whatever you're going to do inside, but that's only for the building inspector and stuff like that now.
Yes, yeah, we, we are still laying out the architecture plans. It's not finalized yet. And then we have to go through the inspection permits and all of that.
Um, probably just for the picture of it, uh...
Okay. Okay.
Jeez, there's going to be about twelve dentists within walking distance.
It's actually...
Hadley must have a lot of bad teeth.
Like, I, I pretty much know. The only people that are new in town is the Hampshire Mirror Industry. Like, they are relocating from Manchester. The other one, Valley Dentists, they are just right down the street, so they are moving into that. We are kind of just moving from Amherst, so not a lot of new people are coming.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Most of them are just kind of reshuffling their places.
Moving around, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we like Hadley more than Amherst because it's right on Route nine, so we're passing by this and we thought that this is much better than Amherst, so.
Okay.
So we do have to ask you, you've seen digital imaging?
Yes.
Okay, because you are in the aquifer protection district, so...
Yes. No, we actually have digital imaging, fully electronic computer. And we are also bringing our cone beam CT scans, so we have to go through approvals for that as well, but we do plan to install that.
It's amazing. Forty-five years ago, when I set up, you had to have an office in Northampton, Ann Amherst. I thought maybe Hadley, somebody, no, nobody would go to Hadley, so you had to have it in both places. Now, talk about the tie.
Yeah, we live in Northampton, so that's kind of what we thought, somewhere in between might be. And plus, it's, it's an up and coming town, so.
Well, I mean, twenty-five years ago, there was one dentist in town.
Yeah.
Now there's...
Twelve, twelve, right? I mean, if you, you know, you got the end of Donniston, Barrydon.
Yeah. Oral surgeon, then Dr. Linda Robinson, and then right after, Dr. Piper Wilson, so yeah. I also go to the Valley District and I'm like one of their board and all that, so I do keep in touch with most of the dentists in the area, so I, I hope to know most of them that come and go, but it's kind of interesting where everybody's focusing on Hadley right now.
So I'll make a motion to approve the use in the sign.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Oh, what is the name of Hadley Dental Care?
Yes.
Which, okay, that's how we need to know.
What's this street address?
One Mill Valley Road.
It's where the, the new building where the tap room is.
Tap room.
As in...
Oh, right. Right down the corner.
But it looks like we're losing the coral people.
Uh, they're already emptied up the space since March, so it's been empty since a couple of months.
Really?
Yeah.
Where did they, where did they go?
I don't know where did they go, but like when we went in there, the place was already emptied up.
Really?
We looked at another like place where the pastry shop is. There is also vacant space, but that's laid out for a law office, so if we had to open there, it was a better space, it was bigger, then we had to go through a whole lot of renovations. This one was much easier, it was just empty, so saves us a lot of construction expense.
Where'd you go to school?
NYU.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, pardon me, but are you the one who was the dentist?
Yeah, retired, wanted honest, yes.
Mark, he was...
Did they say watch out for him?
Mark, he was the one who said that there's one person who is a retired dentist, so.
Okay. I thought they were doing pretty good, the coral. Oh, well, you had a lot invested in that place.
They sure did. Incredible investment. I don't know if they set it all up, we're talking about the coral people.
Yeah.
It was going to be a combination of aquarium and a scientific research of coral too, so.
Must be the funding or something, that's what I'm...
You had a lot of interest. I don't know what happened to them. That's too bad, that's too bad.
Yeah.
But, oh, well. Okay, good luck. Thank you.
Do I need to get anything from you?
No, I, we just put this on, I will make a photocopy of it, give it to the building inspector, put it in his mailbox tonight, and you go to see him tomorrow and start getting your permits.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Good luck, yep.
Thank you.
Cindy, Cynthia Kizza.
Hi.
Hi. You signed up for general information?
Oh, no, I thought you just said to sign in.
Oh, no, 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 only for general information. Just if you're just here to listen to what's going on, you don't need to sign in. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, what time is it?
Seven.
Oh, seven thirty, we have time. All right, here we go. Mr. Darnley, you'll be up in a second. The Hadley Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, beginning at seven fifteen PM in room two oh three of the Hadley Town Hall. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of Gomohar, if I said that right, realty for special permits, site plan approval, business use in aquifer, and erosion and sediment control to construct approximately a fifty thousand five hundred square foot building at two thirty-seven Russell Street, site of existing roadway, roadway inn, which will be torn down and new buildings erected. The proposed use is a three-story hotel of approximately eighty rooms. Application and plan may be viewed in the town clerk's office for normal business hours, published twice in the Gazette, May sixth and thirteen. Is it, is it eighty rooms or seventy rooms? Because the last meeting...
Yes, well, it don't change, which I'll discuss.
The what?
There's been a little change. The original submission that we gave you was eighty rooms.
Yeah.
And now it is seventy-seven.
Okay, well, close enough, all right, that's fine.
What would you like to even plan, sir?
What's that?
What would you like to even, sir?
Okay.
That's Joe. Best camera angle, plans.
That's how to be a little, a little better for my camera.
Okay.
Thanks.
A little further over to the wall, to the wall, if you could. At perfect.
Mark Darnley from Birch Design is here to present the town place suites from Marriott. I think you're familiar with the site, it's the site of the existing roadway inn, this existing seventy-room hotel there, I mean eighty-room hotel. And the proposal is to demolish all the buildings and put in one large new building in place of this.
It's two buildings.
Two buildings, two buildings today. Two buildings, two buildings today. Um, tear down two buildings there today and replace with one large building. Some of the items I wanted to point out to you to keep in back of your mind as we look at the new proposal is the width of the driveway coming off Route nine is extremely wide at that location. Another aspect is this line here is the existing thirty-five-foot no disturb zone from the Conservation Commission. Uh, and right now, it slightly creeps over the edge of pavement and developed primarily reason that, uh, the wetlands haven't crept over the last twelve years since, uh, the original plan was done, so. Again, we're going to totally demolish that. This is an existing dwelling in the past here. Um, on the previous approval that we were before the board with, um, we had this site and we had this area here as reserved parking, uh, which was previously approved. And the proposed conditions, the general layout for the building and the site. Can we move our chairs so we can sit down?
Sure. Yeah. You can sit on a bench if you want.
Mark, this is a correction. It's not one large building, it's two buildings.
It's two buildings. There are two buildings connected.
You've got, you, there's two existing buildings today.
Correct.
And you're gonna build two buildings?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure of that because I wasn't sure if you're trying to correct Mark of two buildings today or two buildings in the future.
There's two buildings in the existing, two buildings proposal, and a future, there is a connection between the two.
Okay. Like, you like, kinda like there is over on your, um, Mayor, uh, Hampton Inn over there? There's a small walkway between the buildings over there, right? Connected building?
No, they're separate.
I thought there was a walkway that's in them.
We don't have connected from meeting, meeting place to the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll go with the architecture, uh, in general.
Okay.
Just, uh, in general, uh, again, doing general layout of the site, we're proposing to, um, construct a seventy-seven-room hotel. There's existing eighty rooms there, so we're decreasing the number of rooms on the site, so it's no change in use, a slightly change in the number of units. We will provide eighty-three parking spaces on the site. And the driveway, we've narrowed it down to twenty-four feet, which is a little more in line with what Mass DOT is gonna require. We'll make a slight modification there. I think the traffic flow on this proposal is much nicer than what was there before. It was a little bit disjointed. Uh, there was also parking in the front fifty-foot setback, which was grandfathered back in two thousand and six when the other plans were done. This proposal pulls all the plant, all the parking outside of the front setback in compliance with current zoning requirements. The, the buildings, we get into the architecture better, uh, the main drop-off is at this location here. This is the front entry of the building. There is a patio area in this location for outdoor tables, uh, barbecue, and this is actually a fire pit outside for them to use. Uh, this is a seating wall here, which sort of, um, allows a little bit of privacy from the vehicles. We have handicap parking places as well. Get into the landscape in a moment. There's also a pool inside the building. There's an outdoor patio here for the patrons to utilize and sit outside on lounge chairs when utilized in the pool. We do have a dumpster in the same, in the back, too, much more accessible directly for the, the, uh, dump vehicles to get into. There is an existing emergency access road here which we're proposing to maintain, so that residential house which sits here in an emergency access road remains the same and no changes associated with that. This is a planting plan. We have eighteen full-sized trees proposed for the project. Um, we do have landscape islands separating the different parking bays, so there's landscape island here, here with the multiple trees planted on them. A row of trees along the frontage on Route nine. We do also have specimen trees in the rear, um, another specimen tree here. And a row of arborvitae's here to, uh, for prevent encroachment towards the wetlands. We have had, um, kind of make this a sort of simple thing because it is, uh, essentially the same project. It was a hotel. In fact, it was paved. I think we made a vast improvement to the parking circulation. From a drainage perspective, the previous plan collected the drainage, um, put it into an underground storage system in this location and discharged it into the wetlands after treating it for water quality and attenuation. The rules have changed since that time, um, slightly, not much. But we have designed, you know, we're gonna flip through here, we can always go back. This is the grading plan, which is sort of difficult to read, but we have posed to, on the grade, on the drainage plan, utilities plan. We're going to collect most of the drainage from the front portion of the site, bring it to an underground, um, bring it to a treatment system here, which is existing and discharges it to the wetlands as it currently does. We're collecting all the drainage from this portion of the building into another subsurface system, which will treat the water from the paved areas, release it slowly at existing rates. And we also have a secondary system here, which will collect most of the drainage from the roof, clean water, have an opportunity to attenuate it for peak flow attenuation as well as recharge. The reason that this system is a little bit different than the previous one, regulations have changed, um, recharge requirements have changed, and groundwater separation have changed as far as the state standards for stormwater. We've done current test pits out there to confirm soils, and these are in strict compliance with the state, uh, stormwater standards and also the city, I mean, the town, had these stormwater standards with one minor exception. Stormwater standards in Hadley require three-foot separation between the bottom infiltration system and the groundwater. This particular situation is two feet above, the bottom of the system is two feet above groundwater. We are asking for a variance from that requirement. Uh, it's been asked before, and the two-foot separation is in compliance with the state standards.
Is that from us or from the Conservation Commission?
That is in your wetland. That is in your stormwater guidelines. Speaking of Conservation Commission, one week ago today, uh, we presented the project to the Conservation Commission. Um, we have made some modifications to the plans as a result of that meeting. We were going back to them next, uh, next month. But one of the modifications that had, we, plans that you originally were submitted to you, we had the building come out a little bit farther at this location. Um, and we also had the, uh, the dumpster over in this location. Conservation Commission was very concerned about the proximity of the building to their thirty-five-foot no disturb zone. And to remedy that, um, they, we, uh, eliminated three rooms on the end of the building and simply shrunk the building and pushed it back this way. Changed the stairwell, internal configuration of the building, pushed it back to give us more breathing room. First thought was, well, we just take the whole thing and slide it this way. We wanted to do that, but, uh, we're sort of dictated to put the buildings in the back. The property line has difficulty here, but sort of converges. It's wider in the back and narrower in the front. And we have a setback of fifteen feet here, a modular size for the buildings and the rooms. And that leaves us very little room there to put a sidewalk and a roadway and also leave a little bit of green space between us and Randy's property to fit everything in there. So, we're already down to twenty-two feet here from driveway width next to the building versus the twenty-four, which is more comfortable. So, to slide the building forward, we would decrease that even more, so we felt we'd push the building back towards the north as far as possible. We do have a peer review on the project. Um, I know, I think I've got to you on Friday or Monday. Uh, again, I think it was, uh, clear that, uh, we complied with all the requirements from the, uh, zoning requirements.
Except for parking.
If there's much more, we'll go on the site and we'll jump into the architecture.
Yeah, the only thing about, they said, you don't think you're not in compliance with the parking, right? And you were saying that you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna have to go through some TDR.
Well, that's right, so I should go. These are construction details. I forgot to go through the TDR process. We are out of compliance with the zones, but the, uh.
Even with, even with the reserved?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, this is two-story building. The other one was one-story.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So, we have, uh, the parking areas here, we've sort of, and the parking areas are shaded one color, which you can see. The dark shaded area, and the crosshatched areas are the reserved parking, and the, the gray area are the open space. Based upon that requirement, we are seven point two-three acres shy, or require seven point three acres of TDR conversion to accomplish the
Okay.
transfer development rights.
Okay.
And then I think I should.
Ooh, we're not posted. I didn't post for TDR.
You didn't post for TDR. I think that was in our application, but.
Oh, yeah, I just, I saw the road just sediment control TDR. We can, I can repost for the TDR, but we can, we can approve this subject to the TDR approval. That's not, it shouldn't be a problem.
Um, and.
Probably explain to, to Mark about the inadequate parking in the, uh, purchase of additional parking for a transfer of development rights.
Oh, when you people, we, our parking, this Mark, this Mark.
Yeah.
When you put, we, the town bylaws, zoning bylaw requires two square feet of parking for each square feet of building. That two feet includes parking, driveways around it, and those kind of items. And, I don't know, how many years we put TDR in?
Part of the APR.
Um, no.
No?
Well, no, not directly.
Not direct.
Not directly.
But it is, in lieu of not enough parking, they will purchase some open space agricultural land.
Transfer development rights, so one acre of TD, of farmland, um, equals two thousand square feet of parking.
Twenty parking spaces, two hundred square feet per parking, four thousand square feet.
Four thousand square feet. One, so one acre of parking purchases four thousand square feet of parking. That includes driveways and everything else, so it's like a combination of everything. And so it says there's seven acre shore, they're gonna have to purchase, oh, seven point three acres is what you need to purchase.
Correct.
Okay, all right, I guess say, yeah, you know, seven point three acre shy, you don't have seven.
No, no, no. We can have some here.
They've gotta purchase seven point three acres of TDR.
Thirty thousand square feet shy.
And every, approximately every, uh, year, the conservation, the price of TDR land is, goes into a fund, and that is used primarily to purchase eight, the town share of APR rights. And I think as of two thousand seventeen, which is the most up-to-date number we have, one acre of TDR, or one acre they need to purchase is ninety-nine seventy-eight, so it'll be seven point three times ninety-nine seventy-eight.
That's nine thousand nine hundred, sorry, that's ninety-nine thousand.
Yeah, nine thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. So, it'll be about, uh, you know, roughly sixty-five thousand, seventy thousand dollars of eight, they're gonna have to put into the TDR. When you go at the town meeting, especially this last one, they were drawing money out of different funds, and one of them was what they call the TDR fund. That's a special fund set aside specifically to track TDR, uh, contributions. And the town has been, well, very successful in using the TDR fund and the TDR thing from both a business perspective and from the APR perspective, in that, you know, not everybody requires all the parking that's required. Um, you know, but if it's a restaurant or some other certain types of businesses, then no, you can't give it, but, you know, hotels, um, you know, some convenience stores, but department stores and stuff primarily need that parking, like when, uh, uh, just example, cargo freight is, needs to, for the two buildings putting on site, there's quite a bit of parking there. And we asked them if they needed that much parking, cause they don't need to pave it all, and they says, no, the, uh, the, uh, developer, not the developer, but the professional prospective businesses feel they need all that parking space, and okay, then that's fine, you can pave it.
We build what we need, but we have to show that we can comply.
Right.
So, for Mark, as a historical note, we, uh, when we originally adopted, this says we adopted it only in two thousand. I thought we had it before that, but the, uh, when we originally adopted, uh, transfer development rights under the heading Farmland Preservation Bylaw, uh, we offered the opportunity of either buying development rights directly from a farmer. We envisioned that as sort of a secondary market to the state conservation, uh, the state agricultural preservation restriction, which moves very slowly, but in the, all the years that we have had this, we have never had a single developer actually negotiate a deal with a farmer. They've all been very happy just to.
They contribute to our fund.
Contribute to our fund and move on.
Yeah, and the fund is used, like we said, is used to purchase pound share of APR rights or development rights.
Makes sense, cause they're on a timeframe, they're trying to get, it's easier to just write the check than to go out and negotiate.
And because they did not use the parking that they had set aside, that has already been calculated into the water drainage. And the stormwater runoff, right?
No, we don't, our, our design for stormwater, as we have presented to the commission, I mean, to the board, is for the proposed development. If this were to be developed, we'd have to come up with a stormwater management system for the expanded parking area.
Right, and that, that's okay. We, they've done it before, and that they have the land to put additional, I mean, they could, they could, they would use a similar underground system.
I could design something made out of titanium right now. I wanted to, cause we're not gonna build it, but we have adequate room to do some sort of detention infiltration.
Yeah, that's the important thing, is that you have the adequate space to design something.
So, that portion that you just had your hand on is not gonna be included with this development as the parking?
Correct. You, the plans that I showed previously, that's, that's what was going to be constructed. This is reserved parking area. We can't do anything with it because it's reserved parking, and we can't put buildings or else in. By the time we come back, we'd have to come back to the planning board to tweak that.
So, you have the parking calculator already. You said eighty-three parking, and that's, uh.
That's adequate for our needs.
They're putting, they're putting, installing what they feel they need.
Even full occupancy, we still have room for some staff.
It's amazing, how many.
We hope we have full occupancy.
This don't, oh, what's, what, what, I mean, I know you said it once, what, what is, uh, the brand this is going to be?
This is a Marriott Town Place.
Marriott Town Place.
Town Place Marriott.
Town Place Suites.
Oh, Marriott Town Place, so this is Suites, okay, this is Suites again.
Yeah, these are smaller suites, very small suites.
Okay.
Compared to the.
Compared to the old one we just.
Okay.
It's a much smaller room and much less.
That's a good point, uh, that Jim brought up regarding the Suites. Past history of this place, this building, the old place, uh, was called Suites originally, and then it turned into rental apartments. This is not gonna be your planning, of course.
No, no, Marriott will never allow it.
Okay.
These are high-end names that you're seeing going anywhere. These are not, yeah, they're, they're, there's a whole.
Marriott will never allow us.
To do like monthly or weekly rentals.
So, what's, what's gonna be your time limit in renting the Suites?
Normally, it's six days to one month, you know, not more than.
Usually the average length of stay for something similar to this, just like the home wood, a normal guest stays around like five point three or four point eight days. So, they don't stay longer than that.
Okay. Just like Mark going on a business trip and doing a job someplace.
Yeah, I could get you the actual number.
That's okay.
With the average length of stay.
Yeah, that would be appropriate, because I'm sure we're gonna get the question, this is like a stealth apartment complex, which would not be allowed.
No, I, they have statistics, and Home Wood has it, and these guys have it, but it's not, and I could bring it next time.
I'll say no more questions on the site. We'll jump into the architecture, and, um, I'm gonna say I'm the outside guy. Rick will be the inside guy here, so he's much more adept at explaining this than I am.
Hi, I'm Rick Fatsanos with AGI Architecture. We're in downtown Northampton.
Okay.
Um, a lot of this is driven by Town Place Marriott, their standards, um, and obviously then tempered to meet the town of Hadley's requirements. So, basically, I think you already know the square footage of the building. Um, we're meeting all of the requirements as far as, um, aesthetically, the continuous roof, uh, the cupolas, the materials here, uh, the first floor is going to be a stone veneer, and the second floor, uh, and third floor will be horizontal siding. And the roofing at this point in time, if I'm wrong, is we're just going with asphalt shingles.
Yeah.
So, fitting in with what else is in, is in the area. Fixed windows with air conditioning units, um, grills here. You can kind of see the, the first floor is perforated. The, I'm gonna go to the floor plan.
Are, are the air conditioning units hanging out the windows or they're on?
No, no.
You're underneath the window.
They're inter, they're interwoven into the window system.
They are, nowadays, everything is inside the room.
Yeah, it's in the room, so, so there's nothing, there's no boards or anything sticking out.
Just as a grill?
Do you wanna?
It's a grill within, within the window system, so you got glass, 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 and a grill.
Okay.
But it's all one integral storefront unit.
Okay. So, what's the height of the building?
Uh, the main building is at fifty-seven feet three inches. The cupola's top out at sixty-five feet.
The cupolas, cupolas don't count. There, no.
Okay, just putting it there for record.
Okay.
So, punched windows for the rooms up above, down here in the public spaces, and I'm gonna flip over quickly to the floor.
I don't think I have the floor plans there, Rick.
You don't? All right.
We don't need the floor plan.
Okay, so I'll just tell you why the configuration is the way it is.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, as you basically come in here, um, these are the public areas, so, uh, Town Place, you know, really wants to make, it's more than just a little lobby, so there's a gathering space. They do a breakfast buffet kind of arrangement, and that space sort of flows, so it's a much larger interior lobby, and that's one of the reasons why. Um, there's a lot of windows down here, cause there are open public spaces, and there's a fitness center, which is also one of the amenities that's standard for this, um, brand, um, which also would be along there. And then on the outside, Mark had mentioned the fire pit, little outdoor entertainment area, so they can have an acoustic guitarist kind of thing on a Friday night, sort of an amenity thing, um, that's right outside of that lobby space. On the backside, this glass is basically representing the pool. The pool is entirely inside the building, but there is an exterior patio, so in nice weather, there are doors on the ends of the storefront where people can, can go outside. Um, but there is not an exterior pool in this building. This is where Mark was talking about. You can see that this has changed a little bit from the last, um, we had to clip that corner. You take those three, three rooms out and sort of shift the stair back, and that was in addressing the conservation conditions, uh, concerns. You got your nice clips here, Mark, if anyone.
Rick, where's going, that's it.
Um, and then this is basically the, uh, the other views, east facade and the west facades.
No, which is the front view?
This is the front.
That's the, that's the front, okay.
This is the front, so this is the entrance lobby, but the entrance doors are on the, on the side.
Okay, and, and this is the side that's going to face east? Okay, and, and this is the side that's going to face east?
This is the side that is facing south, that's actually the pool.
Oh, okay, oh, that's the back side?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Is that-
And then the other, then?
Yeah, we didn't fit them contiguous, we kind of split.
Then this is the east and the west, these are, these are the east and the west.
East side and this is the west.
And up in the gable, that's signage?
This is signage up here in this gable, yes. There's gable signage on both of those, east and west facing, and then above the entrance.
How big are those signs?
Uh, I do not know at this point in time, in all honesty. That's regulated under-
Section seven, you're allowed multiple signs.
Yeah.
But the total square footage has to be within sixty-four square feet, that's all.
So they're not going to all be there then?
Okay.
Because that, if we dip into all of those, we're gonna be over.
Yeah, that's based not on the face of the letters, but on the square.
Yes, a rectangle drawn around the mass, understood.
Yeah, you're allowed, I think it's up to three or four signs, but the total is-
But an aggregate of sixty-four square feet total, okay. So consider there would be at the entrance.
We are not grandfathering, we have that sign on the building right now.
You're taking it down? Yeah, you're taking everything down, it will be there.
You're referring to the pylon sign out front, or?
No, on the building there.
On the building, okay. So what's the sign out front gonna look like?
The sign outside, that is, we remain in the same location, same, same size, same location. We're not modifying the sign, I, we don't have a, you make sure what the signs don't look like.
Externally, Luke?
Actually, we've had that sixty-four square foot building sign limit for a long time. So I'm sure you're either in compliance, you must be in compliance.
That was two thousand and six, when we did the modification, I think.
We had sixty-four, we've had sixty-four square feet for a long time for the building sign. We didn't used to allow it to be divided into, into multiple signs. It had to be one sixty, one sign on the building, one sign on the pylon. The change was to allow multiple signs on the building, but still not to exceed sixty-four square feet.
Okay.
The, uh, externally illuminated, the sign, the piling sign, the pylon sign.
Or back light.
Pylon signs, internally illuminated.
Existing pylon sign is internally illuminated.
Right.
It's inside.
That they can get away with.
Yeah, that, that one is be grandfathered. Those need to be externally illuminated and backlighting on the building, backlighting is also permitted. That, a lot of, there's quite a few businesses since they found out backlighting is permitted, they're going for backlighting. Actually, it gives you, I think it gives a prettier sign.
It is nice.
And it's, I mean, it makes the sign stand out for sure. And it's not as, as a intrusive as an internally illuminated sign that goes right out. Um, just like a subdued light, if you would. Anyways, okay.
Okay, so we're allowed that, again, sixty-four square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
The signage on the building is separate from the pylon?
Correct.
So sixty-four on the building, sixty-four square feet on the building and sixty-four on the pylon?
Correct, and the, this building signs can be divided, I forget if it's three or four signs. Because a lot of buildings will face different, they have different views, and they wanted multiple signs. So it's, okay, we'll give you multiple signs as long as the total is within the sixty-four. There'd be a lot of multiple road sign, you'd see, I couldn't imagine what you'd see. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, continue.
No, no problem. Um, I don't know if you have any other specific questions?
What's the footprint of each building?
Uh, the total average is fifteen nine ninety.
You have it.
That's total.
Total.
Per each building?
Per each building. Right, that's what.
If you take that number and divide by four.
No, no.
Can't be, divide by two.
Okay, by two.
They, they are less than twelve thousand five hundred.
Uh, it's eight, fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty-eight square feet per floor.
What is the foot, you've got two buildings, what's the footprint, a footprint?
A footprint, each building.
It's different, yeah. Right, I don't, I don't have that.
Okay. But they're, they're within, they're less than twelve five.
Yeah.
Yes.
If you've got twelve thousand five hundred, if you got a, if you got fifteen five per floor and you've got two buildings, you've got to be a rough, roughly half, I mean, or maybe two-thirds, one-third.
Yeah, we're, we're less than twelve thousand.
They're very close to being similar in size, so we did, did, yeah.
Eight and seven, something.
And there's a walkway joining them.
Correct.
All floors or just one floor?
All floors.
All floors?
Yes.
Just curious, why is that? Is it Marriott requirement or rather than making one building, you're making two walkway?
One set of elevators. Or is there two sets of elevators, each building have to run elevator?
No, no, no.
The entrance lobby, the building that contains the entrance lobby has elevators and then that gets you up to each floor and then you cross.
Then you cross over, and then there's stairways in each one for emergency access. Okay, that, that, that's one of the reasons, elevator, one, one set of elevators, John.
Okay, yeah. Lighting?
Exterior, oh, outside lighting.
Outside lighting.
Parking lot lighting.
We don't have that with us right now, I know that. Uh, we will be dark sky compliant, we'll comply with this now. There's existing, uh, LED brand new light poles out there. We want to utilize those as much as possible for cost savings, but we have an opportunity to place those and do a isometric lighting plan for the site yet. But we in total plan for the, for us.
I'm not sure I heard everything you said at the beginning when you were going through the site plan about the buffer in the back and it creeping. So you're making that better, or?
Yeah, there's, there's two things, uh, back in two thousand and six, we modified the site, but that was currently on there. And at that point in time, the town had a thirty-five foot no disturb line as well. Uh, that time we flagged wetlands, created that thirty-five foot no disturb line and built it accordingly. Uh, your permit and the wetland delineation expires after three years, so technically, legally, that line just disappears. We had it recently flagged, over time, wetlands. And interpretation, who put the flag on the ground changed slightly. So the thirty-five foot no disturb line today is a little different than it was in two thousand and six. But regardless, we're pulling, the proposed project will be further away from the wetlands than they are today.
Questions, any other questions from the board? Questions with the audience?
Yes, quite a few.
Okay.
Um, we, we kind of addressed the wetlands issue last week at the conservation center meeting that was here last week. And, um, they wanted the building moved, um, thirty feet or so towards the front because they also wanted a maintenance area to get mowers around and stay away from the wetlands area. Also, the wetlands has changed over the last thirty, forty years. And that possibly when the original hotel was built, that the drainage was not adequate back then. I think their plan was to, um, do a lot of things but connect to the old piping. And maybe a study needs to be redone to adequately protect that wetland area. Because it certainly has changed quite a bit. If you walk by, you'll see many trees that are fifty, a hundred years old that have just toppled into the wetlands area. Um, our property, us three neighbors are on the backside of this hotel. And we got concerns with the height of the building. It used to be a two-story building, now it's gonna be a three-story building. Uh, we have concerns about noise when the garbage trucks backing up to the dumpster. We have concerns with lighting infringing across that wetlands area onto our neighborhood. Um, so there's, there's a lot of things. Can the, can the building be slightly modified to accommodate parking on the other side of the building? Or further away, because as you know, noise travels. We already hear diesel engines on tractor trailers idling in the parking lot, idling all night long.
Refrigerator trucks.
Refrigerator trucks idling all night long, tractor trailers, garbage trucks backing up, and that's a concern.
The, the, if, here's, if, back up, one thing at a time here.
Okay.
If you're hearing diesel engines or refrigerated trucks, and if you're hearing engines running all night long, it's against state law?
Well, it's happening.
Well, it's happening.
Okay, who are you reporting it to?
I, I go there and I go to the police and sometimes the police come over. One time I went to the, um, front thing and they said, oh no, we're in compliance and stuff, but they park it right by the line.
Under state law, a diesel engine cannot idle for more than five minutes, regardless of the weather, they have to be shut off. That's, that's state law. That's not a zoning by law, that is state DLT law.
And they have their buses, buses back there too. And a lot of times when electric companies where they're staying, of course, when Sully's was there, they used to run it for an hour and a half before they'd come back and get in the trucks. We can feel when they shut off, the refrigerator truck shuts off, you can hear it, you can feel the house stop shaking. That's how bad it is. And I've gone over there, met with that, one person was really nice. They went over to the truck driver and said, you know, um, you're idling. He wasn't even staying at the hotel, he was just parked there. You know, but I've gone to a clerk a few times and I've just given up. Because they says, oh no, they're in compliance, that's what the front desk would tell me.
And you were concerned about the new outdoor area outside this swimming pool where they're gonna have, you know, guests and music and, and things sitting outside.
I'm not sure who said we're gonna have the music. The other part is regarding the noise. You know what's also annoying is when you hear dirt bikes and ATVs riding across during the whole day on a public road. So, you know, that, that's, that's been going on for a while. But the other thing is to know for the board is the main parking is now in the front, the majority of the parking, with a giant building blocking it from the back.
I would ask for the lighting plan and it would be nice to see that, because that would cause-
We, 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 we're waiting for that, we, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it'd just be, you know, to see that.
Yeah, there won't, there will not be no approval granted till we get the lighting plan.
And I think, um, again, it would be, um, I, I'm against giving them a variance, um, for, you know, the, the three feet separation of groundwater. We're right atop of an aquifer and, and they're asking to be, again, not compliant.
Whoa, 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 what are you talking, variance for what?
They're, they're gonna ask for variance instead of having a three foot separation between the groundwater. And maybe, they can explain again, maybe I misunderstood, but as I understood it, that it, they're going to only be a foot short.
Okay, right, now.
So, uh, you know, there's some concerns, because that, everywhere in Hadley building up, the water table is rising. And I can show you pictures today of the river behind us and the road.
If we have a, if we have an engineering group that says this is, the design is okay, and we have another, our consulting engineering group that reviews their design and said it's okay, we don't go by our hearsay or somebody else that, well, we think it's a concern. If you can find an engineering, and I'm not trying to be a wise guy here, drainage is a very hot topic. That's why we have a consulting engineer review the drainage. They say it's good, our consulting engineer said it's good. We don't second guess that. In very rare cases do we second guess two engineering groups, one of them that works directly for the town, saying that it's going to work. You don't like it, okay, and I'm not trying to be a wise guy here, remember that. You would need to hire an engineering consultant at your expense that says their design is not good.
We have a family of engineers, so it's not gonna be a problem.
That'd be neat.
Okay, okay, under a professional, likes a professional civil engineer that says their design is no good, based on these facts. If you can get that, then we have an issue, we, we have something we can talk about. We have, because we have two consulting engineers that said it's good. So based on facts, it's what we go by in engineering, you know, numbers.
Can I just ask a question in, in line with that? Originally, and again, you've made some changes from, that originally you were gonna use the drainage that you had used on the original property. You said that you were gonna use that design and we said that was twenty years ago. Have you changed that, that drainage plan, or you're still using the original design for the original hotel? Because that, that was a concern, because it's not the original hotel, it's a bigger hotel and it's a different design. So I'm not sure, and I, you, you know, you've covered a lot of ground, so that was something I wanted to-
Let me explain very quickly the drainage process. The existing hotel was designed with a stormwater, underground stormwater management system. We're proposing to totally remove that. That's, that's gonna be totally taken out and taken out of the ground. We're going to install a new, totally new system. The new system is superior to the old system in two ways. One, it's, uh, it meets current standards, which are higher than what they were before, plus the fact that we are actually decreasing the amount of pavement and surface areas and impervious areas with this proposal than what was there now. So there will be a decrease and runoff, less pavement, and the strange system is more advanced than the existing system.
With the lighting, the lighting question.
So Mark, what is the authority you're pointing us to for deviation from the requirements?
It's under the stormwater, um, regulations.
Two feet versus three feet.
Is it in the zoning by law or the general by law?
No, it's a waiver.
I think it's under, I'm not sure, I just know I've run across the people. Uh, actually, I think the peer review letter actually refers to it as well.
There was some concern about the lighting while I'm looking that up, but the, we do measure it. If the light will go one foot candle power over their property line, they're in violation. So there is a measurement to, to abate the, uh, potential lighting. And we ask for shoebox lighting, so it'll shine down on the parking lot and not on the labor property.
Because it is gonna shine right into our bedroom windows. I mean, this is going to be a height that will look right over at them. There's no tree, there's no buffer going to cover this. Um, so that, that's a concern, you know, a property.
But it is, it is measurable, uh, so the one foot candle power is the-
Correct, for the distance, I understand. And then, I guess, what is the noise ordinance? I mean, what, what type of, I mean, it's noisy, we're trying to get that, but we're pretty quiet back there. Um, what's the current noise ordinance? And what kind of things can we expect as residents to be, you know, reasonable? And yet, you know, how are we going to, once this is built and we have a problem, once, to, we're talking about the trucking problem, we're getting nowhere. Now, maybe we're not taking the right steps, but how would that be?
That is a, a general by law and it is usually enforced through the police department. I think the building inspector is zoning enforcement, well, no, it's not the zoning, it's not part of the zoning by law. So it's part of the general by laws. Um, and it's originally designed pretty much to allow intervention with parties to get out of control. You would probably be best off talking to Lieutenant Cook at the police department about how they go about enforcing it.
Yeah, once it's built, we all know that it's built, so, you know, we have, right now, we have the barbecue place that has, you know, already music outside, that's in our living room. Now, if they have music again, it, it is, it is quite loud. You have, uh, a distance about pools and decibels. You know, maybe there's something we could do for sound variation on the roof of the pool room to help cut that noise from traveling, because once you open those sliders and you have a pool.
There are no sliders, it's just a pair of swing doors to gain access to the exterior.
So it's not gonna open up?
No, no.
No, there's no slide.
I misunderstood that.
Yeah, but that's fine, I just wanted to clarify.
I imagine sliding glass doors for the pool and-
Yeah, no, it is purely an inside pool and the doors are just to pass through there.
Twenty-four, six, three.
There's closures, because they're exterior doors, so they won't be open or anything. And there's just a double set of doors.
Twenty-four, six, three, I think six, right.
And is there a snow removal plan that I would imagine does for that?
Not yet.
And that's something going to the aquifer again and, again, it's just, as, as a town, as a resident, we're seeing, um, the water table rise dramatically. If it was conservation, if you talk to them, they're getting a lot of issues.
We've had wet years, that's, that's, that's not unexpected. We've had two wet years so far, last year and so far this should have been wet years, so the water table probably is rising.
I think it's, if you look at, if we look at the river too in the back, I, I mean, I can show you, there's probably thirty trees on your property alone falling into the river. They're falling all along that road, that, you know, our road, it's a dirt road. That's the only thing, as that water table rises, we're now on a dirt road. It's, you know, basically a life vest to get in and out of. So now we talk about, or we're gonna talk about paving that road, because as that water table rises, used to dry out in the summer, doesn't dry out now. So it's just, you know, it's, it's a cycle, it's a concern. No one wants it in their backyard, I get that, I get it's happening, but, um, you know, we're dealing with- No one wants it in their backyard, I get that, I get it's happening, but, you know, we're dealing with a... I'm trying to get my perspective where the dumpster is, why the dumpster has to be in the rear near the residences, but again, I could be wrong because I haven't had a chance to see the new plan. But why would you put a dumpster even near an aquifer? I do not know, when there's a thousand other places it could go. Those are just off the top of my head, some of the things listening that concern me.
Oh, you're building a Walden area. You said that last night, right?
Yeah, it would be a basin area, just like...
As far as this goes, their entire lot's in the aquifer, you know, so...
Yeah, but, well, I guess abutting into the rear, because that is expanding. If you go out there, it has more...
So, I would suggest that you might have, on the noise issues, both ambient noise and idling, things like that, that rather than taking it up sort of on a case-by-case basis and being at the mercy of whoever's taking calls at dispatch that night, that you do make an appointment to sit down with either Lieutenant Cook or with the chief and discuss your concerns. And they've certainly been very receptive to meeting with people to discuss things like the speed of traffic in their neighborhood. And they could, I think you'll have much better success addressing those from the top down rather than trying to report it on a case-by-case basis. And I'm sure that the chief and lieutenant in turn will talk with both these property owners and I'm sure you're not the only ones in town who have trucks idling in your...
No, in my mind, if they, if they come by and they, you know, if the police come by and they find a truck idling, they could go and tell the front desk to turn it off. I, you know, I mean, there is, they're for us.
But it's like a refrigerator truck, too. The guy's in there sleeping and...
That, those things fall under the same thing as the idling trucks, okay?
You know, officer says, turn it off, we gotta turn it off. I don't care what the customer says either. I mean, that's, again, we operate in this town, too. We've been here for a long time.
When I tell you this is state law, I drive truck, I know what state law says. And most of the New England states, not just Massachusetts, have a five-minute limit.
Well, like, I confronted one of the bus drivers, I says, you know, you're here, oh, well, I'm fixing the bus, but he wasn't fixing the bus, they were sitting out there smoking. And the bus was idling with the air conditioning so they could go in and out of the bus when they felt it.
And there is no exception. If the truck, if the vehicle is not being driven, five-minute limit, okay?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Oh, I thought that.
But again, I think it has to come from the top down. Because if you're asking just the patrol officer to enforce that versus responding to an accident or something like that, you know, you're gonna get very spotty results. I think you need to share your concerns with police management and they can work with you to work out a plan.
Bill's right, you know, talk to the, talk to the, talk to the real ones that can do something about it from the top down as opposed to just trying to get a poor patrol guy to go over there and beat somebody up like that. You know, I'm, I don't know the exact, I wish I, I, I mean, there's actually a master in the laws that say just what I told you. I'm not speaking from, you know, lack of knowledge, it's, it is, it is what it is.
It also comes up with, at the elementary school with, or even the high school, with parents sitting there waiting for their kids to get out of something and they're just sitting there idling, whether it's...
Well, there was two tractor charlie backed up to this white car in the parking lot when I was taking my granddaughter to school. And I go, they're still running and they're outside of the truck and everything. So, I know they were running more than five minutes.
Yeah, and I'm not even sure that it just applies, I mean, I believe it applies to motor vehicles. Cars and, you know, gasoline cars and stuff like that are included, not just, again, I'm not positive about the gasoline covered, I know it applies to the big trucks. So, okay, nothing about that. You had some other things?
The height limit, Jim, about the three stories.
Yes.
Versus two, that's the zoning by law that's been changed.
It's allowed within zoning by law of the height.
When was that changed, I'm just curious? Was it recently it's changed or?
No.
No?
No.
It's been a while?
Probably, well, that, they're actually, it was changed in the, in the lim, if, if, they are in the business district, they are also in the aquifer protection district. There was a glitch in the adoption of the by law earlier that's limited the height in the aquifer protection portion of the business district. But there was really no justifiable reason for that. So, the business uses in the aquifer protection district were allowed to go to the same height as all other business districts. But that was the only change. But they, yeah, they are within the height limit.
A big change?
Yeah, and unfortunately, because the higher rises are, you know, in the mall area where everything is developing like crazy, it's just, it's inching its way down, down Route nine. The height of the buildings, like the new Meadow Mall is lovely. And that's very close to us, but it's well done, it's peaceful, it's one level, it's bought out well. And this is just upsetting that it's going to not only change, but it's gonna be another story because it's really gonna infringe on the value of our property. And I guess, you know, we feel overwhelmed, there's not much you can do, but it really is.
And would we, and when we put in the village overlay district, I don't know, 15 or so years ago, 12, whatever it was, we wanted to reduce, limit the size of buildings in the village overlay district, which is where this is. And the business owners and a lot of others complained, oh, wait a minute, you're treating us different than the rest of the business district. And there was a lot of, a huge amount of pushback from all of the property owners that owned Frontage along Route nine that, you know, it's not fair. You're reducing the value of our property because we're all business district, but now we can't build as high as they can at the other end of Route nine. And so, it was kept to be the same height, all from the bridge all the way to the Amherst Town Line for one of those reasons.
Although, as I read the chart, it does say the height is 42 feet in the business district.
He's saying maximum height is minimum, mean height because it's, is a taper building, you know?
Right, so, so we indicated the ridge height, but it's actually the mean height of the building, which is the average of the slope group that determines the height.
You're 57 feet high.
Right.
It's the height.
Fifty-seven feet.
To the ridge.
With a couple.
With, couple doesn't count.
And if you had air conditioning units, those on top of roof, those don't count. But how are you measuring it? It's usually from the peak to the bottom.
Oh, it's mean height, top and...
It doesn't say mean height, I don't believe.
No, it says max height of buildings.
It doesn't apply to towers, or spires, whatever, but... I know we've had this discussion before and...
Exactly.
I think we were talking about it being to the highest point of the building. Height is measured to the highest point of the building.
From, from, the mean point is the ground elevation, okay? Which means you're essentially in a flat lot.
Right.
It's the ground to the highest point of the building. Highest point of the roof.
Okay.
The same thing you allow us at the company. Company has, I don't... Move it.
You mean to say we missed it?
No.
I think there's some building code language about height of buildings.
That's the building inspector should have picked that one up, too.
I'm not sure, I'm gonna be outside, but...
Another early experience.
One of, one of our problems with our zoning by law is we don't define a lot of things. Height is one of them. I'm upset. And so, Tim has been going by building code for height to, as a definition, for lack of anything else, and I can't blame him for that. Because we don't define height. I don't know what the building code says about height.
I think mean height, I will talk to Tim tomorrow.
We're not approving this anyways tonight, so we can, we can, we can look into that and get an answer on, okay? But one of, one of the things they're working on, some of the by law things they're working on is a definitions section, so that we get rid of a lot of this, what does that mean? Because the building code, in some cases, says one thing and we mean something different.
We don't define height. We don't define height.
The maximum height.
Forty, 42 feet.
Forty-two feet.
Right.
But definition would clarify what it's measured from where to where.
That's right.
And that's what the building code does very well.
Yeah, right.
So, it's not just a few feet, it's 15 feet discrepancy.
Could you go to the, you know, the architecture of the building? That's what, I thought your building was like 50...
Fifty-two, 57.
He said 57 feet.
What's the height of the roof?
The ridge is 57.3.
Oh, it is 57?
Yes.
Okay.
But it really isn't because that's a mean height.
No, that's the ridge.
That's the ridge.
That, that's, that's, what we're saying is that that number doesn't really count because we're talking about the mean height based, and we can give you that, we'll calculate that based on the slope.
So, if we put a gambrel roof on?
Correct.
So, what's the height, what's the number below 57? That, no, that, that one.
That's the eve, which is at 36.
I think that number came up originally because of the ability for the fire truck to reach that high. And I think that's why we adopted that height because there was supposed to be a second story added to the theaters in the Hampshire Mall. And that was the concern and they never did add the second story.
Or buy a fire truck.
But we did.
They did buy the fire truck.
We did buy the fire truck.
So, the mean, the mean height as that is based upon a triangular method, right?
Correct, I believe so, I don't even, I'm not an expert on that.
What's the slope of the roof?
They are all eight and twelve. I want to make sure that we've got consistent eight, 12 pitch.
Eight, 12. Do a quick calculation, Mr. Arquita.
How do we go four and 12?
Not eight, eight. That's a 60-degree angle.
What was your, your eve, was it 32 or 36?
Thirty, 36 was the eve and 57 is the peak.
So, you've got 21 foot three. Half of that would be, would put you at 47, 46 and change, if it's half.
Yeah, but eight, 12, that's, that's not what the mean would be. It'd be a triangle method.
You had to get the centroid of the triangle.
The what?
centroid of the triangle.
I'm not sure what the centroid, as much as the halfway point of the triangle, but it's, it's... Again, that depends on the, on the eight, 12 pitch. So, off the top of my head, I'm not even gonna try to guess. I have to look at my, my formula book because it's been a long time since I've done that. What about the engineer in the back of the room?
All of these guys. That's what I paid them for.
That's why we hired them.
Good answer.
Can we have a six square feet, please?
I'm not even gonna try to guess on it because it's, like I said, I need my formula books on app. I've been a long time. Okay, so we'll need the lighting. Obviously, the mean, the actual mean height of what it is.
So, we're a couple of things, let's see, sign, there's no sign design.
Right.
Okay. So, we can have 64, 64 square feet on the building and 64 on the pylon.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and one in the building can be divided into multiple signs.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And one in a pylon can be internally illuminated because that's grandfather.
Grandfather.
Okay. Let's see, lighting plan?
Do we want to revisit the bonding issue now or we want to keep it the way?
No, we don't.
I was gonna say, Bill probably has an opinion on that.
So...
Mark, what we're talking about is that the planning board used to require a bond to make sure that the building was in compliance with what they said they were gonna build. And it used to be forwarded to the town treasurer and it became kind of a, bit of a bookkeeping nightmare. Now, the authority has, well, they've given the building inspector a lot more authority to enforce the issue, so he can really deny a certificate of occupancy if it is not...
Withhold, yeah, yeah.
So, that's where we defer to...
Previously, he was interpreting the building code as saying that they complied with the building code, he had to give them a C of O without regard to whether they complied with zoning.
Right.
Now, he is allowed to consider compliance with zoning. And I will say that in the, all the years that we were doing it that way, we never once did anything with it.
Right.
Pyramid Mall.
Like Bill blows you, I'm just a little late.
He's been sleeping on a, on a Merritt Parkway with, with his engine running.
It was a little backed up.
So, what I have, so the sound has been taken care of, the lighting has been taken care of, the planning has been acknowledged. Noise has been concerned. So, we need to see a lighting plan with movement and everything. We want to see a sign design. We have to repost for transfer development, right?
Yeah, I will, I'll get to that one.
And we just need a calculation from you, like a page, just saying how you...
It's on the front.
It is, okay. Maybe just copy it off and, a handout sized thing. I took a look through the erosion and sediment control by law and I don't find our authority to waive provisions of it. So, you'll have to point us to, to that. And we have to resolve the definition of height.
That would come from Tim.
Well, partly. So, if Tim interprets the building code, we interpret the zoning by law. So, I think we're gonna have to have a conversation. It may be worthwhile inviting him to come in when we do that.
Okay.
Is there anything else on the punch list?
Did you talk about the two-foot separation versus the requirement of the three-foot separation?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's the, they're asking for a waiver.
I saw that.
And we don't know what our waiver authority is.
Yeah, I don't think so, okay.
And then, Mike, you have to watch this video and file the piece of paper saying...
I will, I will, yeah.
Is it gonna be on YouTube, John, or he's not there?
Yeah, it will be. It'll be on YouTube.
It'll be on YouTube tomorrow.
What about the 71% parking?
That's what the TDR, I forgot to post for the TDR, so I will post for the TDR, I'll get to that one.
Okay, okay.
Eight of times, which is 7.3 acres of TDR?
There is some point in sound, I want to make sure you guys know I read this stuff.
I just had one quick last question. I know that Mass DLT is widening Route nine, which is going to benefit everyone traffic-wise. So, the traffic study for something like this really can't be applied because you have to then be taking into account what's gonna happen in 2020. Is that kind of how we're looking at all of these?
Basically, we look, maybe looking for a better answer, but we apply with what's there today. If the state is proposing to do something a year, two years, or five years down the road, we typically let the developer know this may happen, but we're applying today's by law to what is there today. They're probably set far enough back and the taking of land or the taking of, I'm not sure there's really much taking of land through there because I don't know if the right-of-way for Route nine will really become much wider. What'll probably occur is the green space on each side of Route nine, for the most part lately, when they've been doing some of this work, has gotten virtually nil and the right-of-way is about the same. That's why they're putting the parking... That's why they're putting the parking, the sidewalks, you know, you've got a roadway, a curb, and sidewalk. As you see down the other end of Route nine, which is obviously, we can talk about that for a while, on how that doesn't make the most sense for snow plowing in the winter, but, you know.
So two things about Route nine, one, the, the current plan is for a three-lane reconstruction with a shared left turn lane in the middle, not a full four-lane reconstruction. And second, this is actually a net loss of rooms compared to what was there. So I wouldn't anticipate there would be any traffic issues, any more traffic issues than already exist.
A lot exists. We can't get out, you know, it literally has to be fifteen minutes.
Right, well.
I'm not the only one, though, we're all extreme.
No, yeah, that's, if you have to go on, that's an issue with any, any commercial development on Route nine. It's not a signalized intersection. And for their own reasons, the state will not approve new signals without a lot of substantiation of a need for it.
More analysis.
Yes. There had, the site has to warrant a, a traffic signal by virtue of accidents.
Amazemel Valley hasn't gotten wide, that's, that's the one that, there's an accident there every night.
They will not, the crossing between the malls on South Maple Street, what's called the Southern Crossing from Pennies to Walmart, does not have enough accidents to warrant a traffic signal.
Whenever the weekend or.
Yeah, that's, that's not, we, we, again, this is the state, we're not, we can sit here and poke fun at them all the time, but the, like Bill says, they say that there isn't enough accidents there to warrant a signal, even the malls are willing to pay for it. And it's.
They're tough to deal with, I, I know.
You know.
Just curious how, like, you know, all this.
Yeah, we, we've been asked, you know, could, can you put dividers down the middle of Route nine like you have on Route two going through asphalt to discourage crossing traffic? No, those don't work. What can you say?
Not much.
I mean, you know, and they probably, you know, I don't know, you know, enough of that.
So if we continue this to the second meeting of June, is that enough time to get the paper?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, I will, I will post for the T D R for June 18th. And we'll continue this meeting to that date so we'll have the, the issues all done for that one. Is that enough time for you to respond to everything, Mark?
Yeah, I, lighting plan is a two-day process, what people do. I don't see anything unique here.
Okay.
And I don't know how far up the corporate chain you have to go to get your signed design approved.
We can call.
We can get a signed package, but. With bridge.
Tim's definition and.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'd probably like to, if you could encourage Tim to come to our, come to that meeting to discuss height or put something in writing about his interpretation of height.
And if he uses mean height, then we'd like to have the calculation anyways for mean height.
Was the wording you said the mean roof elevation or mean, mean roof height?
Mean roof height.
Okay, the mean roof height is the eve, the ridge minus the eve, divide by two.
That's the state, that's the state building code?
And then the mean roof elevation would be that number plus the front door elevation.
That's mass, that's bulk, that's mass building code?
I'm not sure if it's mass, but it's, it's the standard building code and what's defined as mean roof height.
Yeah, we, we need the mass building code numbers because they have some, they go by the basic, they generally go by the bulk of code. However, there are enough exceptions that it's going to be, you're going to see what it really means because sometimes we've, you're going to see the mass building code.
Be first, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, somebody's, Tom, Tim says, well, we adopted the bulk of code, but we don't have it here and it's different here and different here. Well, I mean, that's mass, again, that's, that's true, that's.
And mass amends it.
Yes, so.
We have amendment about this, Vic, and then the I B C itself.
You almost think that uniform is the National Electrical Code, is the National Electrical Code, and we all use that. However, we're talking the building code here and even a plumbing code has some very unique things in it. So, okay, I mean, I, I appreciate what you're looking up, but, you know.
Got it.
And if we, hopefully, we'll find out if that's the same number or not.
So what happens if you're, you're using one standard and Tim's using another, how do you come to, you know?
That's, we.
How do you define what?
That's what we need to decide because, like I says, we don't define height. So without the definition in the zoning bylaw of height, we're kind of stuck behind the wall, the door, if you would. And we almost have no choice but to go by what's Tim using, which is the state building code. Because until we define height.
So Tim's already seen these plans, so I'm assuming that he's already.
Well, he has looked.
Cause I know, I talked to him, he had looked at the plans and he didn't even know it was, that was when it was in the buffer zone of.
He's not going to put a whole lot of effort into the plans until they actually apply for a building permit. Because he'll do a quick look at them, does it generally comply with zoning, well, that's your issue, what do I see as glaring issues? And he, he has so much going on right now, I doubt he put much of a look into these plans. Cause I know he is buried with all kinds of inspectors and everything else. And, I mean, with all the, with all the other things going on, on, in construction along Route nine and, you know, the new town projects, he's been spending, he's, he's busy. Okay, so we have lighting, mean height of the building, signs and sizes.
What else did you have?
T D R, oh, T D R, oh yeah, I guess I thought T D R, yeah.
And authority to waive separation.
Oh, yeah.
Definition of height and Mike has to watch and report. So he can participate.
Are we continuing this to the 18th of June, is that?
Yes.
Yes. June 18th will be the next hearing.
Everyone here then?
So far. Okay.
If there seems to be any controversy or concern about the, the height, should we suggest the variance or?
Well, let's see what, what, what happens at that one.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Mark, or?
I don't.
In your group right now, okay.
Our next hearing is the 11th, maybe with the Concom, and then we'll back to you.
Okay.
Okay, that works out.
Is that color red ring satisfactory to everybody for building colors?
Those are the actual colors that are going to be on the building?
That hasn't been finalized.
Oh, okay, so we'll need building colors at the 18th.
And the type of material?
Yes.
Yes.
I know you said you, you anticipated a asphalt shingle roof, just, you know, verify that, the color of it.
Sure.
We can't tell you what to use, zoning cannot regulate means of construction, but we can expect to see what it's going to look like. So we don't get surprised when it comes out cherry pink, cherry red.
Or made a party flag.
We have been surprised in the past by projects that.
Of blue.
That got built in a different color palette than they had been permitted in, even a different design.
Yes.
We made some very minor changes, I told you, we shrunk the building, we changed the driveway configuration lately. Do you need these updated plans regarding this or you don't wait till the final?
Wait until, we don't need an updated plan, those changes are minor enough that, okay, you told us about it. Once you finally get, we, we don't need tons of paperwork.
I just want to make you.
Yeah, so that's fine, thank you. So once you get, once we get a final set of plans after everything is well said and done, we'd like a final set. Okay.
Very good.
In fact, the final set really doesn't need to be until the ones that we sign. When you get the three sets, okay? We don't need something along the way because then we just, we make the recycler very happy.
Cause that, after you prove it, I have to add the statement where everything's.
Right.
Then you're signing that.
That, that would be fine at that point. Okay, I mean, if I want to make one sheet in of a change or something like that, that's it, but a complete set, no, we don't need complete sets.
Very good.
Okay.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the view for the time being? On the 18th, if it will come back. Pardon?
We'll see you at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Those were three of ours, that's Cindy Keatsa, I don't know the names of the other two. Okay, thank you. See you on the 18th.
For the 23rd, which is this Thursday, I think you've gotten an invite for ribbon cutting for the new hotel.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's Thursday?
It's this Thursday.
Tomorrow? No, Thursday, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't make it, I will be, that's somebody in New York running.
On the road again.
On the road.
Yeah, I did, it came to the planning board and I sent it around.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
I'm not the one who sent it out, so, I mean, you're invited for me.
Okay. All right, let's see, let me take care of that. Um, let's see, I need to make that so I can make, I can make copies of that on my front, I can find, maybe I can copy that. Digital information, we got a letter from the historical commission complaining about the lighting at the Dunkin' Donuts. They're complaining about the backlighting sign, the backlit sign, and that the illumination comes onto budding properties. And which was received, oh, there's no date on this, boy, history is. The date is April 14th, but we didn't get it until after our last meeting. I made a copy of this and I wrote on that the issue with the lighting is a zoning officer item. Backlighting is permitted and is not, as it is not internal lighting, I signed my name, I gave a copy to Tim and to the historical commission. And basically, you know, the zoning enforcement officer has to look at that.
Will they have to come back before us because the name of the business is now Dunkin', it's not Dunkin' Donuts? So they're going to have to change the sign probably or something like that? That might be an opportunity.
You know, they change it with, within the parameters of what's there already. You know, refacing a sign doesn't require.
Right.
Doesn't trigger anything.
It's a shot.
Right. And, uh, let's see. If you remember, Joe and I went to a meeting back in the spring or the fall? It was in the winter. It was in the winter at the Amherst Library, right? Anyway, it was about the floodplain mapping in the town of Hadley and basically up and down the Connecticut River Valley. And they had redrawn the floodplain maps town by town. And Hadley had a whole bunch of new areas in the floodplain. And Joe and I both knew that a lot of it is not flooding. And we pointed it out to the people because that was the people from FEMA. And then we actually applied for a grant from PVPC to see if they could help us study this. And come to find out, there was so much of a concern, not just with Hadley, but with Hackfield and a lot of the other towns, especially in the, right here in the valley, Sunderland, Whately, because it affects all of us, that they were actually going to look at doing some kind of a study because they wouldn't get the grant for that reason. But they were looking to do something with the floodplain overlay maps and how it could be addressed for the members that belong to PVPC and along the valley.
Jimmy, you said that it wasn't flooding, it, it doesn't flood, is that correct?
Okay.
Right, it doesn't.
It does not flood.
No.
Okay. So the areas that they designated as flooding do not flood. Okay. Anyways, we received a letter from FEMA in a mail and it goes to the Board of Selectmen and it said, uh, okay, it was November 27th that we went to the meeting, according to this. Conducted a discovery meeting for the Middle Connecticut watershed and risk assessment map. And it has to do with the Connecticut River for us and the Deerfield River, like I said, for upstream. The purpose of this letter is to inform you that there may be field surveying activities within your community. The field survey task will commence in May 2019 through winter of 2020 in select communities within the Middle Connecticut watershed. The data obtained from this task will be incorporated in subsequent hydrology and hydraulic studies that may be used to produce an updated flood insurance study report and flood insurance rate map panels for your community. And it goes on to explain a bunch of other stuff, but basically that they're going to actually do some survey as a start to verify elevations, so.
And the reason they're doing this?
Is because.
We know, but I want to make sure, they need more premiums.
They need more premiums.
They need more premiums, so they want people to pay premiums so that people build, that build mega million dollar mansions on the shores of Miami Beach are, don't have to pay as much insurance. So this is, this is called wealth transference.
So there is another related meeting coming up.
That's next Tuesday, Tuesday at 1:00 P. M., right here.
And that is with the state office.
Correct. There was a whole, Bill, they had, they have a whole agenda of what they're putting out about that.
Who should be the point on this select board, conservation, planning board? Or should it be someone appointed individually to have the responsibility? I mean, just.
I'm, I'm not sure. I think I want to see what this person is going to come out and be talking about on Tuesday. And then maybe we can make a decision and find out, you know, my guess is it probably should be.
Last time it was, when it was initiated, the planning board was in charge of the mapping, but the select, select board had the vote. So they assigned the planning board the, to make the presentation to the town.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, we, we will have to make the presentation if it is going to be altered.
Yeah. I would suspect of those groups, we are probably the most knowledgeable. Except even for the conservation commission having some too, but the Board of Selectmen.
Is that, is that a good comment?
Well, I mean, I, what I mean is that as far as flood areas and water areas.
I know, I know what you're saying.
You know, it's the conservation and us, not the Board of Selectmen. And I would think that probably the planning board, if there has to be a point board, it might be us.
Because we'll have to make the presentation if it is altered to the town meeting.
Right.
So we should know something about it and why, because.
There was a biology professor at Amherst College in the seventies named Lincoln Brower who did a study of the flooding river. And it was about the Connecticut River. He's probably dead and gone, remember that?
He was predicting that the Northfield Mountain pump storage would cause a tidal surge that would reach the, what's that, those rocks in South Hadley just over the north, just south of the Hadley line?
Oh, I, I know what they're calling it, I know what you mean.
Something ledge or something that.
He didn't want to control anything or change anything.
He was predicting that the water release from Northfield would raise the river so much that it would actually come up to the, those, to the rocks that just at the, South Had, at the, Hadley, South Hadley border, there's a little road that goes off to the right, there's.
Is that the Tep, the Titan's Pier?
Yes, I think so, yeah. So I think the idea was that, yeah, he was grossly overestimating.
There is a tide, there, there is, but he did exaggerate it.
Well, he's probably looking at the Deerfield River and seeing what happens there when they let it loose.
So what was the root trigger of this whole FEMA?
Pardon?
I mean, where did this come out of them?
They, they want to.
Resurveying.
They want to.
Digitalize.
They want to update the floodplain maps of the valley. And it's not just Connecticut River, it's the Connecticut River, the Deerfield, the Beaver Brook, Sawmill, Ash Swamp, Butterie Brook, Deerfield River, in the watershed of the Connecticut River.
Is this something they're doing nationally or did they pick us out?
I believe it is, it's got to be a national.
This is, this is a federal insurance thing.
The, the base maps are pretty old. I mean, you could, you could get a digital view of them, but if you actually bought the paper map, it'd probably still have a 1980s revision date on it.
Their, their comment is that we only have paper maps, they're outdated. Their, their comment is that we only have paper maps, they're outdated, and they are inaccurate.
And there's only one company in the whole United States now that will analyze the flood insurance that's located in Houston, Texas. Remember when you said that?
Yeah. So what they wanna do is they basically wanna digitize the floodplain maps and make them more accurate and reflect what is really going on today. And so they had the original maps for each of the towns, and an updated map, proposed updated map at this meeting that Joe and I went to. And they had areas flooding that, I mean, my mother and grandparents lived through the 36th flood. And I know my grandfather's property did not flood. And yet they've got most of it underwater. And a lot of other areas in Hadley, very similar things.
And it's easy to say that we could deny their, their redrawn maps, but there's three sanctions. Number one, you cannot get any federal insurance, or any, for a house that's built in that area, from a federally insured lending institution, which are all banks. And number two, the town cannot get any grants that has a federal attachment, like APR or sewer funds or water funds. There's a third sanction too, that they have. But it's basically mortgage, couldn't get a mortgage from a federally insured lending institution, and you couldn't get any grant money that was tied to that.
So I'll give you another example that I'm familiar with. In North Hadley, on the River Drive side of the Mill River, you come through the S-turn, and then you head into the Village of North Hadley, and the Mill River is on your right. The River Drive side of the Mill River is not in the flood zone. The French Street side of the Mill River, which is exactly the same height, is all considered a flood zone. Although, a couple of people have gone to the trouble of hiring a surveyor to calculate the actual height of the property line, of the property, and have been exempted out, but they won't exempt the entire street unless you individually petition to have your lot measured out.
Just curious, how do they do that? I mean, you know, from the 125 is our flood level here.
There are benchmarks in several areas in Hadley.
But like in French Street, yeah, okay, we've got one here at Brussels School.
There are, there's at least one benchmark in North Hadley.
Okay.
Okay. Randy believes on the house on the island. I don't know that. But there is a benchmark in North Hadley someplace. And so to be accurate, they need to go from that benchmark to wherever you're measuring to get the right elevation. Now, benchmark elevation, or marking elevation is a whole lot easier today than it was 40 years ago, simply because of the digital age. They can get, I mean, you can take your GPS and put it on the ground, and if it gives you elevation, and probably be reasonably close to what the real thing is. But is it good enough for, you know, this? I don't know. And how accurate do they make them? You know, these are things that I don't know the answers to.
Who owns that house on the island?
I don't know.
Somebody's gotta be keeping it up, because it doesn't fall down.
It may.
It's the guy who owns Architectural Millwork, I believe.
Ah, okay.
Okay. So, you know, there's.
You can go to the GIS map of the town and pull up the property card for it.
The, so, you know, there's, I think, there's several benchmarks in Hadley.
Okay.
And that, beside being, like I said, the digital, I don't know how accurate those, how really, really precise those are. Randy?
Audi cars have the, give you elevation too.
Okay. Anyways.
Okay.
So, that's, that's general information, those two.
You gonna be there Tuesday?
I'm gonna be there Tuesday.
Tuesday, 1:00?
I'm away all next week, so.
Yeah, okay.
I might try to come.
I will be there Tuesday.
What time was the Tuesday, 1?
1:00. Right, I believe it's right here. Anything else?
Do, I just wanted to put out that policy statement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I'm not looking for a vote on it, but just for the consideration of going forward, just to have a statement on record.
Should we have a vote that says that?
Probably.
I would think we'd wanna make, make that a motion.
Okay.
You gonna send the copy to everybody, or?
Oh, sure. It's on your, it's on your agenda.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to adopt a statement of non-discrimination that reads, "The Hadley Planning Board addresses all projects and matters before it on their own merits, imposing only valid requirements based on the Hadley zoning bylaw and regulations. Massachusetts general laws and regulations and best engineering practices without regard to the race, color, religion, national origin, ancestry, sex, gender identity, age, handicap, disability, participation in discrimination compliant related activities, sexual orientation, genetics, or active military service or veteran status, or any other basis prohibited under applicable law of persons appearing before the board in any category. Non-discrimination and equal treatment are the policy of the Planning Board."
That is the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Oh, just as another piece of information, on June 19th, the day, that's a Wednesday, after our 18th meeting, the Board of Selectmen is requesting a joint meet, or save that date for a possible joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to discuss various items. You didn't forward that?
Wednesday, June 19th time.
Uh, that would be the Selectmen meeting, and they don't have a time, but I'm assuming it's probably gonna be like at 7:30 or something like that, like, at the usual Board of Selectmen meeting. They wanna discuss items like, oh, what a thing that David Nixon put out, expanding, looking at affordable housing zoning, looking at more dense or larger commercial sized buildings. Look at possibly more dense residential developments where we have sewer and water. Those, a lot of the ideas that they're putting out are around increasing the water and sewer usage to get more fees brought into town. Okay? So, again, we're not gonna talk about it, just save the date, and as we hear more, we'll let you know.
Okay. We can, we may have enough information, they will have posted their agenda by the time of our next meeting. So I will put a line, something on our agenda to discuss what they posted.
Okay.
Just for Mark's sake, affordable housing is always an evergreen issue in every community. Hadley has 13%. We have the highest percentage of affordable housing in Happy Valley. So the state cannot impose the, what's the 40B restriction that can overrule the town zoning, so.
Cannot be an unfriendly 40B, it can only be a friendly 40B.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just trying to review something from last month. When we, when we vote on approval of a site plan.
Yep.
Then what, it has to be recorded?
Yes.
And then there's so many days for an appeal, is that right?
Yeah, after it's filed.
Bill will type, get it typed up and record with the town clerk, and everybody that is in a butter receives a notice that it has been filed with the town clerk, not necessarily the notice, right?
I've been sending everyone the full thing.
Since, they get a full copy of the, of the approval, whatever that may include, and then for the date that it's filed with the town clerk, anybody that is an aggrieved party has 20 days to appeal that decision. On the 21st day, if no appeal has been filed, they can go and get a building permit. And we have 60 days?
90 days.
90 days for the date of the approval to get it filed with the town clerk.
I tried to do better.
And is there, is there judicious work that we have to do on that, or is it just clerical going to filing?
Just writing up from my notes to a document.
I'm just wondering if we're subject to criticism, if we're quick on some and slow on others, that we're showing prejudice?
Uh, it's entirely a function of my workload.
Okay.
And, uh, spring is a very busy real estate time. I'm gonna have to go back to the office after this meeting, so.
I'm just trying to keep us out of this.
Yep, no.
You could resign as clerk.
I could make the new guy.
We could appoint you, you can take it on.
Yep. No, everybody is, um, yeah.
But from other communities, when people apply for a building permit, the great example is the Fish and Wildlife, Northern Fish and Wildlife. They, John Oliver put that in the budget, and it was supposed to be in Amherst. But the building process, the permitting process was gonna take a year and a half in Amherst. And they had to be in the building in a year and a half, so they came to Hadley, because we do expedite things compared to other communities.
There is, I mean, you will hear over time, we have, we have several businesses in Hadley that originally started in Amherst, but they went to expand. Their process is such a lengthy thing that they came to Hadley. NES over in the industrial park was one.
Yeah, HBO McKesson.
Yeah. And they said that in Hadley, we could get a building permit from the time we apply to the date of getting a building permit, you know, four months, give or take, if things are in order. In Amherst, it's, they were telling us it's sometimes exceeding 18-plus months. And, you know, it's just the differences in the way things are done. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history, thank you, and thank you, John.
Thank you, John.